Um, okay. Okay. I'd like to call to order the special budget meeting. For Wednesday, January fourth, twenty twenty two. At two oh four P M. Okay, so here we are for our third budget meeting and we're gonna go over. Operational on highway again and the capital budgets and hopefully get very close to. I think our goal should be to try to pass the budget um the night of the seventeenth if possible because. Because we're running out of time. Because we're gonna have town meeting. On March seventh and pre town meeting on February twenty.
Yeah, like pass the budget or pass what we're gonna put in the on the board.
As in, we have to vote to, yeah, to warrant, this is what we wanna warn. All right. So everybody, everybody have the materials they need to look at the budget? Start with the gen- the operational budget? So Linda.
Yes.
With the. Uh, new. Person, your, your assistant resigning. Um, did you? Are you happy with your number for the assistant now?
Actually, no, I had just sent. Marco a change. I. May, and if you want me to make copies of this, I can or we can.
What is this?
Um, my updated. But it did not change by very much. I, I changed the hours. To thirty. And I, but I left the eighteen an hour, so it came out to be.
Twenty eight oh eight.
Twenty eight oh eight. And then uh with the. I did not add in the twenty. Um, the beamers.
That all gets worked through.
So the budget, sorry. The budget that you sent us yesterday, this did not have this change in, cause obviously we did not know of it. So this, this number actually went down.
Yeah.
Cause it was twenty eight nine twenty two.
Now twenty eight oh eight oh, the assistant.
Okay. And did we? So with thirty hours, did we add insurance as well, at least a two person plan? Cause this, this current, the current. Employee doesn't take the insurance, but we can't plan on that in future. So we should probably add another person. At at least at thirty hours, you know, three quarters percent could be, yeah.
So yeah, we, I'd have to add another um.
Point seven five of the some plan.
Yeah, I'll have to work that we love.
This remind me, what's the hourly where they, where they, is it twenty five hours? Uh, or twenty five or more? That's, that's when Beamer's kicks in. Yes, or yes.
Or you're saying for the health insurance?
Yeah, but a thirty hour full part time employee should get prorated. Yes.
So I have to do that again, but let's do it now.
Yeah, I guess. So, so we're gonna need a, and I think. I, I don't know, you, you, you guys, you guys guess, two person, yeah, at least.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, sixteen thousand a year.
Mm hmm, mm hmm. You should plan on it and not need it rather than. Yes, cause you can't plan on, and if we hire somebody for thirty hours a week, they're entitled to. The prorated rate. Yes, Sarah, sorry.
That's okay. Um, are you confident that thirty hours a week is gonna be enough? Or are you gonna? I mean. How much work are you gonna be going into for the next fiscal year in terms of like what the reappraisal, everything? It's thirty hours, it's thirty hours gonna work, or are you gonna need to come to this part with you and say? So do you plan on or do you do you want?
I can't, you know, I can't say one way or another. I mean. I think. Really depends on what turn the market takes and what's happening with sales.
Well, I was thinking more along the lines of how much labor from your department goes into the, to the uh reappraisal. The town line reappraisal. And how much of that's gonna hit next year?
Between July and first and June thirty of twenty three into twenty four.
I, I really, I, I don't think a lot, but I don't wanna guess. I don't. I really don't know. This is like total new territory, um. Not, yeah.
Does the fire department have part time? Admin help or?
Just clarify.
Yes.
Marco, is the time that you're really swamped around the same, it would be the same time?
Summer, yeah, like all summer.
Would it be the same time?
All summer and from February to, you know, now till. Eight, you know, March. Yeah, there are times a year where. Somebody that have, you know, if that's where you're going.
I'm just saying, if you're trying to get more hours and, you know. If there are other places that have just, just be like, yeah, let's just give this park launch more hours just because we think it's gonna be there and then. Have to, you know, not give you hours and that be an issue, there somewhere else, like beneficial.
Right. Yeah, I could absorb somebody. If, you know, if there's capacity, there's access to. They have time.
Okay. All right. I think that at this point, that's, her recommendation was for thirty hours, we should stay with the thirty hours. And. Okay. Um. Anybody have any other questions or comments? Whether you.
I know why it was less. Because the original figure had been figured with a three percent increase. I just remembered that, but I, I put it back because basically we're looking at a new. Position. If that makes sense.
Yes, that's it, it's a new hire.
New hire. So they wouldn't necessarily be eligible for a raise coming on July first. Is that what you're saying? We hire somebody next month, we're not gonna give them a raise.
We're only talking. Eight hundred and fifty dollars here. It, well, we gotta go through the whole process, it's probably gonna be March before anybody is even on board, no.
That's.
All right. Any other questions on the front page? First page? Okay, page two?
Yeah, we, um, we. The only thing that we really that we spoke about last time was uh. The planning commission mileage and expense that we added, we put it to fifty two hundred um. We, I added three types of. Legal fees because. There's now, there will be. A zoning legal fee line item, planning commission. And assessors, so this way, you know, as things. You know, with the new town plan and um. It's why we can break everything out as opposed to having it all be in one catch all account, I mean, it'll be more clear.
Mm hmm.
So what you said, the three?
They will be for uh. General admin that already exists and that's where everything goes. So you'll have general admin, zoning, planning commission, assessor. And that's something we do, Jeanette and I do, it's, you know. Not extra work, in fact, it saves work because then. When you need to know down the road what you spent legal on.
Right.
Now.
So we haven't changed the, actually, we took it down five thousand from last year, but we haven't changed. We're not raising money in each one of.
No, no, we're raising, still we'll figure it out.
Yeah, as we actually get bills and, and track them.
Right. Hopefully we don't spend more than ten.
So zoning. Assessors.
And planning. So four, that will be four and.
That way we know, like, as we go through. The reappraisal, how much.
Right, exactly.
And that one could be significant in the legal fees. We don't have. Hopefully not. Anything else? Yes.
I was just saying, could we go back to the dog warden?
Sure.
Um, now notice we have two fifty in there at the table. I think, and then there's nothing under mileage and expense. Is that the under mileage and expense? Cause they don't really get paid. As a single.
They get paid out of payroll. Yeah. They get, um, well, don't they get their like? Oh, no?
They just.
So we should move it.
The fee that they collect.
Right, yeah.
So there's no, there's a net zero to the two.
So we've moved that to fifty.
Two thousand, so. Mileage.
Okay.
It's on page two, that I've ordered mileage.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
We're gonna make that. So maybe I don't know if we, in the past, if they take fifty, we can take this out of this. Uh. First page.
Oh, sorry.
Take the two fifty out and move it over to mileage expense.
Are you in it too? Okay, okay. Just giving you.
It doesn't like to share.
Well, you can say it, it's just, I'm gonna save it to my desktop.
Anything else on page two from anybody? All right. Page three. Basically utilities. And. Haven't heard anything about Fremont and power increases for. Although a lot of other states have electric. Utility increases happening. All right, moving to page four then, weren't we? Were we supposed to be seeing a net? Um, savings on electricity with the new lighting install? We don't know yet.
I guess it's too soon to tell, either he wants to go through.
Yeah. Which would be great if we didn't spend. I mean, that was kind of. Right, right. Okay. Page four starts with building maintenance. And this is. Sorry, what, what, what's the building security line? Which can, which can.
Which ones have lighting? The, oh, the security streetlights, like if you're on um like fire. In front of the transfer station, like on the real road. There's a few streetlights, like that, those are ours, that's what we pay for.
Well, you don't have to break them down as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There is, yeah.
Yeah.
There is. And then one again, there is.
One of the part two.
Yeah, probably, yeah. Covers those two, yeah, yeah. Gosh, that's. Part of the file. You said, something around, yeah.
They maintain. Of the cost of the.
Um, so we're on, what would be paid, starts with building maintenance. And this is regular building maintenance, this is not. You know, capital. So uh right now, we're looking at nine percent, but then adding the sixteen thousand for helping terms for the part time. Assessor assistant. I'll increase that probably.
Try to do it now. And it'll be prorated because they. Is thirty hours, is that full time, thirty hours?
No, I think five is full.
So it's like seventy five percent.
Mm hmm.
So if sixteen is full time, one twelve.
Yes, twelve. A two person times twelve.
Can we move on, Marco?
Yeah, please.
Um, I don't wanna distract you.
That's fine, thank you. Um. I did make a change, but I wanna go back and look at.
Sure. And if, if, if that's fine. Okay, now we're at the building maintenance, which is, as I said, not capital. Moving down into the fire department. And I'm pretty sure there's some money for an assistant in that as well.
I've asked him.
Okay. Well, I don't know why there wouldn't.
Right.
Right. Um. Fire department. Any questions on this page with fire department? Okay. Moving over to the next one, firehouse and then moving into police.
Next one's a show. Yeah, the cushions, girls.
You know, man, I was sort of saying, she didn't see what. Like three.
All right, so it looks like no questions on the fire department. Sarah was texting Rich just to ask a question and we'll see if I can respond. Moving into the police department. Any questions about the police department?
The. Is that, is the ten percent? Increase on the salary, is that include ten percent for um the administrative assistant as well as the staff?
Yeah, that's everything.
That's ten across the board.
Uh, you mean as far as raises?
Yeah.
No. No, that ten percent um increase. Uh, is or what last year's budget was. And part of that ten percent would um. Just, I wonder if it works out that way is including a ten percent. Raise that I discussed at previous meetings for the police officers. Um, the full times that are currently um, and which is also. Um, six percent for the uh. New hire rees, you know.
Oh, okay, so six percent.
Yeah.
Raise for new hires.
Um, based on. That conversation you had, that little session. Mm hmm. And so that percentage. Of the.
The admin gets, we, the admin is four percent.
Four.
Okay.
Four. Um. Yeah.
So that ten percent number. Captures all of the.
Captures.
Those variables, so it's not, it's straight across the board, ten percent, it's.
Right.
Got it.
It's.
Ten percent for the majority. Ten, six, four, gotcha.
Ten percent on, you know, when it, it was off of the cutting that back. If you guys remember my article, five hundred and. Some odd thousand, and then. My guy went back. Us, and then. Tried to figure out best guess estimate. Because again, not. Perpetuating my salary. For half a year, also the potential of that one, that out. Uh, part of um, what we didn't mean. Add the initial numbers, but it also included cutting out using my admins. Current admins, early pack, but she won't be here. And with those numbers, we, we figure out what I needed. Put in, this is making a sound. Um, for the new hire rate, so taking, you use half my current salary, admin salary. I can get the numbers, let's just, you can say it was sixty.
Right.
Okay. So half of hers was thirty. I needed forty eight for the new admin. Okay, so I needed eighteen thousand dollars more. It was less, yeah, to cover that. So basically that, that includes everything with cutting out half my salary. I can, we can cut out half my salary, got half my salary. Cause my salary was the highest because I'm not sure where you guys are gonna go. And what you're gonna pay. The new chief, whether or not you're gonna hire out, you promote within. If you're thinking of hiring in. Then that salary needs to go. Because good luck trying to hire out. Of what's, you know, in house. At. Less than what. So anything. So what we ended up doing was, bring that five eighty wherever it was down to that amount. Was let my salary there, uh. The current sergeant's half, that way we had my half of my salary. To fluctuate whatever you may potentially pay the new chief. And whatever the new chief may pay his new sergeant. You get the best guess estimate and that's how we came up with that.
Okay.
Five forty one two seven. That comes. We got it all on paper, you know. But we've got it. So, um.
Hold on, it's got, it didn't have a standard, I was just saying, that's keeping. A halftime for the full year, one of the offers, officers at halftime.
Not shy.
You're, there's gonna be six and a half, right, or five? So a halftime of the, the full year, there's plenty to keep that six and a half.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. What is the ultimate goal, you think you're gonna start your new admin at?
Um, a lot of that depending on whether we get someone that is experienced compared to. Non experienced. Obviously, we get someone that's non experienced and we don't know who to get. And hopefully we'll get somebody. Um, then obviously the non experienced won't be getting as much as someone that already is experienced. And doesn't need, you know, as much training. Um, try to get someone that's already. Trained in police dispatching is very difficult.
So. Right, but what did you put in the budget for this new person?
Uh, total salary, I believe is forty eight. Forty eight, yeah.
I thought it's thirty eight. Forty, it sounds better.
Yeah, no, it's, it's forty. That, that's, that's the bad, that's for the experience. Um, you know, so if it's something that's not experienced, you can, you know, couple thousand. But you forty eight worse. Experience. Flying sense, you know, guys, I'd have to go back a little bit, having this massive, that numbers, that leads.
I just wanna make sure there's not in the budget for if we find someone that we're not.
Yeah.
Having an extra five or six thousand dollars to. Now to start, you know.
Other questions about the police salaries? Over time and hall, holidays is down five thousand. I'm called differential. It's like just the increases.
You add it up, the overall change, if you take all of the, hey. It's a seven and a half percent increase.
Yeah.
It's, it comes out to seven and a half percent increase if you add those three line items. From. Last year's budget to this year's. The difference is seven.
Okay.
It's pretty good.
Because of the five thousand offering, yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, um. Any other questions about police payroll?
Yes, Sarah, do you know when you're gonna start looking to hire Shelley's replacement?
Um. The admins replacement?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, um. Uh, probably somewhere. You know. Probably start advertising, I'm gonna think probably something in March. Area uh where the intentions are starting them potentially July first will advertise. But they won't be starting until minimum.
Next fiscal year.
For the earliest instance, July.
Dan.
How long of a transition period do you think they'll make the? Have Shelley work with this part of it?
Depending on who it is, again, no experience and you guys remember I sent out, like, shut it right up, that whole packet. Uh, the amount of training and it's a lot of training, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at, at, I'll just say six months. Um, we just uh go a little bit further, just to let you know how it is. I just used, got an email. Um, maybe this Tuesday. From um, not for murder, it was a federal audit that we did. Or the state audit, which is something that our admin has to do, which is very complicated. Well, she does a fabulous job because. They've got no issues with it. With our audit, that we were keeping records or we're doing things. So where other departments, you know, like it, we're checking much X, Y, and Z, and we had this amount of time. We were right there, we had nothing that had ever been done. So, and that's, that's a long task, that looks hours to do. Aims to do.
If anybody didn't get that, I have a copy of it here, that this is almost three, the two or three pages. Two full pages of training.
Yeah, and I did email that to, back. He read that, and that was questioned and I um. Um, I shall write that up.
Other questions about the police payroll? All right. Moving on to police vehicles. Any questions? Our best guess on fuel, I see the prices just jumped like crazy for the census at Fabian. Um, which is usually the cheapest. Um, operational, office flies, all that kind of stuff. Through. That other category is down five percent. So we gotta go with that. And building. Again, a lot of utilities and necessary equipment. Okay. Moving on to solid waste then?
Oh, so you guys off that on that other one. I'm sorry, I will, reading something, so I follow on about what I said about that, get our internet, how I moved that.
Yes.
Five drops out of that.
Yes.
Read that, no question.
Yes.
So the only choice we have is for first line?
So Shelley's still waiting to hear and unfortunately it is, both Fraterville and Wilmington now has that, PDs when they get the new buildings. And that's what's recommended and that's something that is.
Yeah.
So would our internet be from them then too? Or it's both for Duncan?
Very good.
So Fidium doesn't have that, something like that.
Um, what I can do if you want, I can get sheet Shelley's been doing.
I'm just saying, I just wanna see shop around, not that I'm gonna shop around, but it's a big cost, you know. Fidium has that availability, have that firewall.
Well, this goes back to again, with the state, this was all state stuff.
I'm just asking, I know.
Yeah, Fidium I don't think has that firewall from talking to her about it.
And now that you say that's probably something, using why she hasn't, she's gone first, I just because talking with. Part of public safety and who they are. People dealing with, that's who they actually now they're.
So was that. How many different services do we have? You know, we have a Dunkin here, right?
Dunkin here. Um, we have Dunkin at the police department at the moment.
But and also I think she might have highlighted not people that I sent out her issue. Um, she did another quick write-up to try to explain it better, can you guys maybe tell how? So and she she's well aware that you have questions on that, that I was gonna give her a call, put on speakerphone, she could answer this question a lot better than I can.
Joe, that's something you'd like?
No, 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 I'm just trying to get some just. Not saying that, so I just wanna make sure we're getting the best, that's a lot of money.
Uh, it is, and believe me, we were. Figuring issues go on and we can't. We not have what we just. Happen again, and right now. We're still at that, and this could happen again, and then we're down again. So again, it's one of these unnecessary cheap things that. We 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 talked about, we might gotta stay with. Which others looking to, Matt, that team said it's matter of time that we're gonna have to meet this switch.
Okay, anything else with PD? All right, moving on to uh. Solid waste. Again, totally guessing rates.
I think I noticed that the bill for recycling has gone up. From like one sixty now to one eighty three.
For a while, yeah. Versus mixed solid waste is like one oh eight. It's like, why are we, I know why we are, but why are we, because I. I'm getting the feeling that this stuff is just getting dumped and there's no market for it. The plastics, you know. Just on the transfer station salary.
Uh, that. And gotten changed back from our executive session.
Okay.
Sorry, so we're okay, sorry about that, what are we looking at? Uh, just the regular percent, right?
Okay, um, obviously that many, several of those other. Follow and when market changes, that the whole thing changes. So that first line is three percent, so that's I get fifty thousand twenty five. And then all the other, all the, everything goes changes from below that, so Marco's taking care of it. It all, it's a domino.
Fifty oh twenty five though, you got.
Maybe once, maybe once we go through all this and then Marco can plug in all the numbers we're talking about and then we can get fresh pop. Yes, then does it? Um, do you think six thousand is the right amount for substitutes? You wanna give them a raise? I'm not saying give her it, but the previous year she did more.
Put it back to seven thousand.
Well, I think that, do you think that this is going to be there? That you mean the the transfer station attendant? A lot of this, a lot of this is.
The substitutes only when he's on vacation.
Or out sick.
Yes. Right, and some of this was probably during COVID. During COVID, he was out for quite a. Yeah, I'm so that probably. Yeah. Cause he had. Of course, most of the doctors. That would be my guess as to why it was higher than normal.
All right. Other transfer station. Questions? Uh, emergency management, these are pretty. We've got rich had requested. Then appropriations, and I see we have the Dover Free Libraries appropriation. They're asking for two thirty nine, one ninety one. Which is what is in here. Which is a ten percent increase. Did you say that loud? So it's on that tape, Sarah? We're the third most expensive library in the state of Vermont.
Well, are we the third most expensive library?
The town support of a library is the third highest. Just as a flat number, I'm guessing. I do, it's right here. It's up ten percent first. Last year they wanted two hundred and seventeen thousand as well, and there's a surplus from last year. Do you know, does anybody know how much their salaries are going up in the libraries? There's not, they don't tell us.
Yeah, that's what I'll.
The percentage that they're asking for, they're. I don't know how much that is, because it's just a flat. I have last year's hundred forty. I do not.
No, I mean, I have to get last year's.
Last year's hundred forty right there?
Yeah, I have last year's town report, but they don't.
I thought on their own individual budget in the library page.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can. I have replaced mine.
Salary for one nineteen ninety forty nine.
Nine forty nine.
Versus one twelfth, is one twenty seven?
Sarah's on it. Uh, six percent. About. Approximately.
Are they? I'm sorry. Do they have to stand up in town meeting this year or?
Well, I.
But I think the last.
Hasn't decided, um, but the last year, nobody from library was even there. That's about a six percent.
Did we get something from Dan in the historical side? No, nothing from Dan, Dan, do you uh intend to send a appropriation request?
Yeah.
Saying twenty?
Need by what they? Seventeen to get nothing. Third, I need to get something.
And we haven't got these over firehouse yet, fire department.
I came an hour, two hours ago.
Yeah, it's a little interesting how their actual is.
Oh, the actual that figure is not.
Should that be, that be two point, two point one, or two, three one, two point two, and then it could be three one.
Did we all get that?
Just me, here you have mine.
They just went down.
Down two thousand twenty seven bucks. Fire department, they're asking for one oh, one hundred thousand, two hundred dollars, one hundred thousand, one hundred and five thousand two hundred.
Wait, the Eastover Fire?
What's their? The last year, no.
I don't know.
This is last year's number in here. One hundred thousand. Yeah, and so now they're asking for.
Ninety seven, eight hundred. Twenty three, twenty four.
A two percent decrease.
Did I read it wrong?
I don't, I, I, I guess so, here, you wanna look at this?
No, I'm getting them, don't worry. So you see, they have a. Over here, Town of Dover, seventy three.
Oh, so it's their total budget.
Together. What they want from us.
So what is that number?
So that is ninety seven, eight hundred.
And what did they get asked for last year?
One hundred thousand two fifty, although you look at this piece of paper, that's not what's on there. They. The twenty two, twenty three column does not reflect what they asked for last year.
Okay, so this is down, that's good. Okay, thank you. That's, this is, uh, okay. I don't understand how, when we gave them one hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, they wrote sixty four, forty, four hundred. This is so odd. I don't understand it. Oh yeah, there's all kinds of mistakes, because their total income is nine hundred and fifty one thousand dollars.
If in the town. Right.
Right. We gave them one hundred thousand, two hundred fifty dollars.
And that's what they, in last year's town report, it shows one hundred two fifty.
So there's, this is, this is kinda messed up. But this is what they want, seventy three, eight hundred, are we sure? I mean, ninety seven?
Yeah, it's even in the body of the email, right, that she sent.
Ninety seven, eight hundred. Okay. So we haven't heard from. Uh, that Deer Valley Cares, Deer Valley Health Center. Those are the only ones now. Dan, will you give them the letter or a note, because we'd like to have it in writing what you're asking for, can you at least send them an email?
So right now, the only two that we're missing, and then correct me if I'm wrong, is. Is the Deerfield Valley Health Center, we put in as three thousand. Deerfield Valley Community Cares, which we put in as a thousand. Right, and the warned article. Deerfield Valley Rescue, did they send? Are we keeping them at thirty, did they send? Okay, okay. Right, correct, so we're gonna, the ones that are warned, we traditionally do not include them in the final number. But this is just for discussion, so we're gonna.
We're, the ones that we've worn, the question is, is gonna be asked here in a minute, are we gonna warn the library? Okay, okay, so, so um, normally, these three at the bottom, well, the new one's therapeutic writing, brand new, yes.
Yeah, that was new last year, so do you want one even?
Oh, if we vote at five hundred, no, 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 I don't wanna warn it to you guys for five hundred dollars. Sash, uh, twenty five hundred, that's what they asked for last year, do you wanna warn that separately?
Twenty five thousand.
Twenty five thousand, sorry.
I think twenty five thousand.
That's what they asked for last year.
More than a one. A warning. Unless we have others that are.
Well, we have Deer Valley Rescue. We can do Sash and Becky's more than happy to speak at town meeting.
Dan, you gonna stand up and speak?
I think it also gives them an opportunity to talk.
Dover Free Library, do we want to warn that as an article? I say yes.
I do too.
They say no. Joe, you wanted to have that as an article?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we could make it that anything that's five digits, we could ask people to stand up and speak about it. I mean, that, that would be equal for, and so, but we're not asking the Eastover Fire Department to do that. I think we pretty much understand that they do.
Joe. I usually speak about it and I ask people to come and join and no one shows up.
So the only one over. And then when five digits over, that is not gonna be warned, is Eastover Fire Department?
So we have the request from Eastover Fire Department that.
Yes, it's right here.
So I know, so that can be.
Moving along. In the meantime, because Dan has a link to three thirty, we're moving to the highway department. And Travis said he's a busy guy these days, so let's. Let's uh, look at this. Travis is asking for basically a dollar an hour for his new hires and two fifty for his regular. Yeah, and so that's a variable rate. Depending on, you know, how much you're making now, it could be more if you're at the lower end, higher at the higher end, lower, I mean, lower to higher end. Higher at the lower end of the salary spectrum. We. We have you. We did change uh, the commissioner's insurance package for the next fiscal year.
The road commissioners.
Yes, no names involved in that, but yes, so just in case, we have that covered.
Uh, let's.
To be a family plan.
Let's double check, I was not aware of that, but.
Just double check then.
Right now, that plan, we are accounting for an adult and child, but if we go to family, we will attend.
I think that. We should plan probably a family plan.
Excellent. My budget for is generally four hundred hours per person. And we have yet to even come close to hitting that threshold. Yeah, it it was, it's definitely over. Over, so if we can.
I would find some wood and knock on it as fast as I could. Yeah, so we'll work for here.
So if if we think that's too much, then, you know, we can change it above. That's where we.
So that's. Would the. Even with the insurance increasing, it's. Your payroll is, is, well, it it, it's a, a good number.
It actually comes up to a one percent increase.
Add the insurance, yeah. Any questions about highway payroll? All right, highway administration, um, before everybody else got up here in here. We, I talked to Travis about adding the paving certification course. So that we can take um, tests of. The pavement as it's going down, um, that course is. It can be online or in person, yes.
So it's something hidden Vermont or?
Either online, yeah, either there's. Either long or online, yeah, either, there's, there's some that are. In the area that aren't too far. A way that we could do, yeah.
So they run with materials about eight hundred dollars per person. Um, so if we, um, plan on having Travis go through it first and see what it's about. Uh, it's a fifteen hour, twenty hour course, yeah.
Or she pick, but there, there's a few of them out there.
And then so, um, I proposed adding two thousand dollars to, to the line item. Twenty eight. To get to be a train. So that makes that ten thousand.
Got it.
And would you write a paving inspection cert or something like that? Thanks too.
They came without one, or hopefully they've got one. I'll see.
Any other changes to the, that particular coverage of Highway Administration? And highway equipment, which includes. Fuel. And, yes, sir, the increase on the smaller equipment purposes is that they could buy more stuff because the stuff they're buying costs.
Both, and it's to replace some of our older, updates, our older stuff, small equipment.
Roads. Travis is gonna continue to try to get grants wherever possible. I have to tell you, that white line saved that, that Dover Hill.
Yeah.
Over like New Year's Eve, oh my gosh, you couldn't see anything.
You really did.
And you couldn't see the yellow lines, but you could see the white lines.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
All in, a lot of increases, but a lot of these products in particular.
Products, yeah, products has gone up, and, of course, fuel.
Okay. All right. So Marco is probably gonna take, have to take a little work to, to get that.
Not much, I, I've been doing it, I just wanna double check, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Give me five minutes?
I wanna ask for four, but.
Um, will we disturb you if we talk about capital equipment and then come back to the general?
Not at all.
Okay.
So maybe I got a question.
Yeah.
No, that's not even.
You hate to bring it up.
I can't even open, but it's still.
We haven't even researched it, we haven't done anything, I don't know that anybody in this office has the, the ability to do that right now. I don't think we are the people who should be doing that research, I'd like to task Jeanette to do that, um, but she. The employee retirement health insurance. And, and, but we don't have, at, at this point, there is no time to do that, um. With, with this particular, in this budget, doesn't mean that we can't put another program in place, but, um, I don't. I don't know how to do that right now, I don't have, who, who has time to look and research employee and retired employee health insurance?
So I had, obviously done some. Last year for. And that's where you guys have. And then you say, you know, definitely. Do that, so that's what I thought it was, what you knew is. Despite it's somewhere in to discuss where the board wanted to go, because there is difference. In variations from, in the town to town, you know, on what they do. You know, and again, I didn't, you know, go over what was mentioned last year, and, and, but I had Sarah's help with that, and then. Looking at, you know, potentially on what you wanted to do, because there are, like I said. Surrounding agencies, can you feel the split, and even in the VLCT benefit package, you know, there's something there. But like you mentioned, like, you know, a department or a town, close to us that offers that, but they didn't respond to the VLCT benefit. So, going in that book, you're not too accurate. But, um, what I have done with this issue on the agencies, you know, Brown Road, um, Benedict. You know, Lynn Hall, you know, some other ones, what, what they offer, and, you know, and I have, and actually, this is what they gave me last year. You know, what they offer, you know, whether it's, you know, hundred percent, eighty percent, you know, six and fifty percent, you know. A lot of it depends on to what they're offering, depends on the insurance care. After you cross silver, you know, some of them are new project platinum, you cross gold. You know, which includes all of their HRAs, you know, deductibles, you know, compared to where it's are. So, I mean, I do, I do have some of that in here, um, and I. Forget the dollar, right off the top of my head was what we figured it would cost last year, at last year's rate, you know, per person. Um, you know, going forward with retirement, so, I was just kinda curious where the boards all thought for that, since it was brought up and.
Um, well, I would say it'd be a warned article if we were gonna do it at all, because people said for us to look into it. Um, if we can get numbers around, um, a potential. Program, years of service, whether it's a, are we gonna provide a single person plan, a family plan, are we gonna? And that's only till the, the retiree turns sixty five. Um, and is able, is available to, you know, have Medicaid, Medicare.
Yeah, I'll stack that up.
Um. So I don't have any idea the numbers that, that would, and how, you know, how, how we would fund that on an annual basis going. Forward, you know, how would we know necessarily when people were gonna retire? Um, but we should, we did say that, that voters did say, yeah, look into it, they didn't have any real idea of the money involved in it. Um, it was more of a generous concept.
Right.
Um, so if we could figure out how to get some money around it, it is kind of. Unfortunately, because we didn't jump on it the way we probably should have, it is at the eleventh hour now, and trying to figure it out. Does anybody have any ideas about this?
We're talking about it in terms of a retention vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So. Do we, are we saying then that somebody who's leaving in the next year because of retirement would be eligible for it?
I guess that would.
Even though.
All depend on, you know, where it goes and where it's, you know. Effective, and stuff like that, so.
Cause if the intention is retention, my thinking is it really should be offered.
In five years?
Within the first five years of hire, and, not necessarily all the way across the board. But, we're trying to give it to people who are gonna stick around for ten, fifteen, twenty years, and we're doing it as a carrot, right?
Right.
If we're doing it as carrot. We wanna give it to the people for whom it would actually be a carrot, I guess is what it is.
They're going, I mentioned, going. Going forward, so anybody that could potentially be retiring within the next five. Ten. So I think in years would not get it.
Depending on, depending on how we want, yeah, we, that'd be some number, I don't know what the year.
Right, sometimes what goes. Oh, so. You know, with what the years of retirement. Like they're giving an example, like in the police department says, you know, that, that has it, you have a minimum. Of twenty years, uh, not certain, you know, so, yeah, and that's. You know, there's only been worked further on, you know, the police department, you know, say for five years. Or whatever, but they're at that age sixty five, they're not eligible, because you have to have a minimum of twenty years of service. At the town. And stuff, and then that's at, you know, the age, so it goes kinda in, in what the beamers retirement is, and then, yeah, if that. Uh, they would stay on that until, you know, different scenarios happen, when they reach sixty five. Um, you don't have Medicare to say if their spouse. Um, has health insurance, then, you know, they're, they go into their spouse's health insurance, you know. It, it would have to be comparable, if that makes sense, so in other words, like say the town's here. At our health insurance, and say, a person's, um, spouse, their insurance would work the towns. Then that would be, it'd have to be, you know, comparable.
Well, that's. It wouldn't have to be, that's your proposal.
Well, yeah, because that, that's what I'm seeing, seeing throughout, throughout the town, then a lot of it is, you know, there's one town that, there's, you know. The, the two person family plan, if that's what they have, others, if it is, it's just the single person. You know, and not any spouse or, or dependents. Um, the other thing is if you're Medicaid eligible before sixty five, then you're to take that. You know, so there's a lot of those. Options or, or opt outs, or whatever you wanna call that. So it basically, again, falls within, you know, close to what the beamers is, and that's really only the police department. And through VLCT in that book, you know, they don't necessarily say it's just the police department in that benefit, they talk about the town itself. If it's a certain town, it does not have a police department that does offer health insurance for the town.
So, say you were gonna use twenty years, okay, so you come to the town, you're twenty years old, you start working with the town, you work forty, till you're forty? Retire, you're getting hurt, insurance for the rest of your life?
No.
Or is it like sixty five?
We could. Stand up, you come to the town, I would say not twenty years, ten, five years. And it would be at age sixty that we could start getting paid, so if you decide to retire at fifty five and start at age twenty, that last five years we're gonna pay for the insurance. Okay, so, it's not, so, and the reason why I say this, okay, there's, there's states and towns. That are sitting on this huge thing that they put into place, and they're paying up a large percentage of their budget to the retirees. Okay, I personally, I'm gonna be straightforward with this, Randy, I am not gonna be that guy to put our town into that situation. Cause once we start it, it's gonna be a heck of a hard time to get rid of it, cause the employees are gonna expect it.
No, I, I.
And so, history tells me, I like the idea. But it's not gonna be this huge twenty year, work till you're forty, and we're gonna pay your insurance.
Yeah.
Okay? But, uh, that's great for those departments, and in ten, fifteen years, when those towns will look at that large land, and at the end, and the taxpayers are paying, and we'll be like, what happened?
Right. Okay, so I'm not.
If you go to another job.
We can't, we can't tell how much, we capped it at a certain amount, so we're not, we can tell how much it's gonna cost, what the expectation. Cap, we're not gonna pay the full amount, whatever it may be, cause we have no idea how much it's gonna cost. It just keeps going up and up, okay? So, with that said, I don't think it's gonna happen this year. Okay, cause there's too much to figure out, has to go before an article, you know, you can put something together on an article, and the towns vote people are for it. So be it, that's not, I'm not making that decision for my inten- interest that I've been voting in for. So if the town votes it on an article, that so be it. So you can more than welcome to work on your own time on that, please, not a company time. To figure out those numbers and things like that, that would be awesome, if you wanna work.
Is working on an article.
Article in, correct?
Yeah. I mean, unless you're, unless the board waves that. Um, but you, wouldn't we want to, so Randy goes and does this, put a bunch of work into it, then we've gotta fact check it to make sure it's, it's right, so.
Happen overnight.
It's, it's a pretty ambitious project to do in January of twenty twenty three. And, you know, we did, you know, the, voter said, look into it. And we really haven't looked into it as much as we probably should, so, uh, I take some responsibility on that. Um, because if we're gonna do it, we need to do it right, you don't wanna.
Correct.
Do something that's gonna, as, as Joe said, all of the long-term financial constraints of, of what it might do to the town. And make it, make it something that's valuable, but make it also something that is not going to be a yoke around the town. Uh, okay, you know. Randy, you're retiring, you're gonna be what, sixty three and a half?
Yeah.
Um, a year and a half, that, you know, but, again, I, I, when you were throwing out numbers, I'm thinking, so somebody starts here on the road through at twenty. Forty, I'm done, I got my insurance for life, I'm all good, you know, it's like. Yeah. Yeah.
I, I believe you, I, I totally get that, and understand that, and as a taxpayer, I get that and appreciate that, and that's what I'm saying, there are those stipulations. And you can do that, and we'll pay.
Right.
The last five, the total one hundred percent, I get it.
Yeah.
You know, I just, again, brought it up because this is, I mean, chief, this is what I'm seeing, this is what I'm hearing. I know there's another town that was gonna be proposing, that's where most of us last year, they were saying no, put it off. For another year, I don't know if that's happening, you know, this year or not. Um, so, again, it's just something that I am trying to, before I leave. Put this police department comparable and competitive to other ones. So we're not far behind, like we were years ago, salaries, and it's gonna take years to catch up. And try to get and maintain the level of professionalism that we have gotten, and we have retained. And I'm just afraid the way things have been going and heading, that we are now going backwards to where we were years ago. And we're gonna suffer because of it. I would feel that if I wasn't doing that as my job, then I wasn't doing what you guys appointed me to. So, thus, that's why, and I think in before, this was something I had planned, you was bringing up over two years ago. But, hopefully hit. And because of everything then, in my mind, that was not the only thing that. So, thus, that's why I was smashing. But. I hear you.
It, it's just really hard, because if we put something on the morning now, I don't, I think we're kinda doing it blindly, I'm not really sure what we're doing. Other board members, what, what do you guys think?
I know, this is a big topic, I mean, obviously you wanna retain and attract and keep people, but. My, it, it, there has to be like, so we're not giving props later. Hasn't been put in place well, but, so.
I, I think we ought to set a point at a meeting, not this meeting, a subcommittee to work on this. And we can do that, you know, to work on the, uh, employee. Retired employee health insurance, and, and put people from various, um, a board member. Maybe Jeanette. Randy.
Jeanette, do you, is it you who would have access to how many current town employees have been here for more than ten years, more than the same as more than twenty?
At over a years, yeah, that page is there too.
Okay. I don't think we can do it for this year, I'm sorry.
No, and, and, and again, I just, I get it, it was just I kept bringing it up, and. Just to verify that you keep bringing it up.
So, after we get the budget approved, that, on the, the meeting that, before town meeting, cause pre-town meeting's coming, it's the twentieth of February, so. Uh, let's get it on for a February, the first February meeting or something, and say, you know, try to get. A, a subcommittee working on, on this, cause it is gonna take some time and effort. Yes, since we're on this like health insurance topic right now, just since we. Yes, since we're on this like health insurance topic right now, just since we have. You know, heads of departments, if there're just some feelers on how much would people rather have. A higher, like more salary or more something else and pay for some of their own health insurance. Is, do you think we're getting the most bang out of our buck for paying for that for everyone? Would you, would it be rather be allocated differently, like that, is that benefit that we give to all the employees? Something that you feel is the most efficient use of our dollars?
Would people be more impressed by a higher salary and paying for part of their health insurance or a lower salary and having your health insurance completely cut?
So if I understand what you're saying, this is, this is wrap this up, um, but. And in in my notes here somewhere that, one of the things that since she currently teaches are new because of the younger generation. Is there, and and may, and I'm gonna go right, I'm gonna say it's it's probably them not thinking going ahead. So some of them are not thinking of the benefit package. Some of them would go, that's not paying my current bills, I don't care, I'd rather have the money.
You had some of those.
I so, so that's what the chief is hearing, but the thing is, is that maybe stay, and I can only speak on half of. The police department and and discussing things with chief. But you also have people asking for that benefit package. So unfortunately, because of what's happened in our country, you know, people keep bringing it up again. For where this is all happening with this whole waste thing, this was two years ago with the George Floyd thing. Where everybody wanted to defund the police, that's where this whole wage thing is happening. This is why it's just not, it's countrywide or Vermont line. As why all those places that refunded it now, the crime hasn't increased. And now they're realizing that it was a state, their, you know, council people, whatever you wanna call it. And it's costing them two to three times as much, just to try to get their staffing back. To what it was before they defunded, so now it's costing them more now than what it would be if they didn't do anything. This is, this is what's happening, I was on the phone with another chief from Southern Vermont, not the one who right down the road, but. And this was in in his wasting. And and this is what's happening, police departments are calling up other police departments employees and recruiting them. Retaining them, not only offering them their current benefit package, but more pay, this is what's going on even here in Vermont. And so unfortunately, it's it's just, it's that time, this is where we are in our nation. And I'm gonna say it in stocks, because I can see it.
Dan, to respond to you, uh, Scott. Uh, health insurance is obviously different with women and men, women are more health oriented, they have reasons to be. But age has a lot to do with it, being the senior citizen in the room, at forty five, I could break through a wall. But now I have two brand new shoulders as a result of it, but actually I got diabetes. So as time went on, I became more interested in health insurance. So when you're younger, you know, I'll rather take the money, you know, I I really don't need it. Fortunately, I had a wife who got me involved in it, this is fifty, I became type type of diabetic.
And one last thing I'll say on that, finding that more with your single employee, who's not married and has a family.
Right.
Compared to someone that's married and has a family.
Right.
So that's, that's a plus.
Yeah, we we just had an answer, isn't it pants, yeah.
Yeah.
For in the series, oh, watch.
Okay. Okay. Um. All right, so how um, how close are you in America?
I'm done, done, so.
Hold on a second. So then, um, let's look at, let's talk about the elephant in the room. Let's start about wages, cause we really haven't come out and said what we're gonna do about wages, so let's get, let's get to the meat of things. I think that the board is willing to understand that. There are some unique skills and certifications that require or are in high demand today. And are very valuable as all employees are, but having that. C D L, that police academy certification is is. Incredibly important to this town. And I can't believe I'm saying this, but I believe that there does need to be some sort of decoupling. Of black rates for everybody. And so, and I've been a big proponent of keeping everybody exactly the same in terms of. Departments being given the same amount of money to give to their employees. Um, I think that if we continue that route, this is my opinion. Uh, we will lose more employees and I mean, it terrified me, I know it terrified Travis when he lost two two plow. Operators right before the winter. We don't, you know, every time we lose a police officer, it costs us more to just get some of the ends, they're being trained, so. Keeping our police department happy, but also keeping all of our employees happy, because everybody's valued. So I think there is, the the time has come where some of those people with those. Employees with those skills, we are gonna have to pay more to keep them on board, because it costs us so much to replace them. And get them trained.
Well, and the conditions under which they work are different.
Right, they're called out at all times of the day, work overnight, you know, they they.
And overtime doesn't compensate for the twenty fifth hour of being behind the wheel or dealing with a major accident or event.
So.
It's a different circumstance.
Right. Last night, after we spoke with Linda, we had a just general discussion about the situation and I got the feeling that the board. Also had that same, and if I'm wrong, please somebody say that that the time has come to say. Particularly this year with inflation the way it is and the way the market, you know, unemployment is so low. Everybody wants it, you know, bodies and certified people are very valuable, that we're prepared to. Make a two tier wage situation. Somebody's phone.
Yeah, it's just.
So, saying that, what should the two tier wage situation look like?
You wanna talk?
No, well, I just wanted to, I have one about, I have the answer question right there, but just, you know, when I had to go think about this more and just I think it's good for everyone to think about. Whether, first of all, I I I feel like merit based. Or particular needs, fair is not always equal, different people, you know, I don't, I don't personally like everyone should get. X percent, two percent, so just just saying that, um, but. You know, I think we're very fortunate, a lot of the staff that we have here is is great and that. If you think about, if it's, if you're deciding between, I'd like to be very mindful of how we're spending our dollars, but if it's one percent. Uh, more or one percent less, keeping them happy and what that that's gonna equate to, whether it's five hundred dollars. You know, for one percent more, and making sure that we're keeping people happy as compared to not, um. Yeah, uh, I don't know.
Yes, Dan. I'll make this easy, I'll pick on Travis first. Uh, for example, if we figured a number uh, that we wanted to give you in the department, we would like to leave it up to your discretion, who do you give it to? We want that raise, you give it to, cause obviously you have people who operate very powerful equipment. And you have people who mull the law, you have people run the transit station, and you should decide, cause you have to keep your people happy. I would probably like to do the same thing with the police department.
And we have given the department heads that ability to do that for many years, since you started. And, yes, so I guess that the, in my mind, the tiering goes between the police and the fire department. And administrative staff. I mean, and in that, and and the highway, police and highway and administrative staff would be two different tiers of of.
And C D L. Someone with the C D L.
Well, here's, but here's the thing, if we were to say to Travis, here's your pool of money. Rather than micromanage, who he gives those raises to, we would accommodate it in the sense that we would, we would. Plan for the C D L holders to have a higher key degrees than not, but that would ultimately be Travis's decision.
It's just a lot across the board, right?
Guarantee that there've been raises given in departments that are not across the board. Over the years, so.
So.
So then we come back to what are fair tiering, tiering.
I'm in favor, given the year that we've had in terms of inflation of making the in. The budgeted amount for administrative people would be four percent. As long as it's clear that this is a response to economic conditions and then it's not. A new town policy that we're gonna be doing four percent a year going forward automatically.
I can agree with that. So we have some people in, economic development's in at five, Marco's five, that we, I'd like to see those numbers brought, everybody. And then many others at three, everybody put it at four. That doesn't mean that the raise will necessarily be, certainly for direct reports to to the. Was like the board, it may be less, it may be slightly more, um, but that's what, for budget purposes, we're gonna raise. So, everybody agree with that, Scott?
I I would rather, personally, I just said it, like Amanda, I would rather expect everyone to have three percent and then. Feel like we should get more, like you work more hours and come make the pitch and that you should get five or you should get whatever and then. And do that now going from, um, so we're gonna. Think, no, I'm just saying that you but if you think, you're saying everyone's four, that's what we're gonna do.
But we are gonna review department heads and supervisors.
They're gonna let us know what they're expected to give for next year, but what they're planning on, cause we gotta kind of be in to know. So, it's kind of.
Three percent in, that we're going to consciously, it's gonna be, that's all we have the money.
Sure.
And, and I, and I do believe that the economic condition is more. I mean, one percent isn't even really that much more of a boost, but I think it's an acknowledgement of the fact that.
So what are the other departments getting?
We haven't talked about that yet.
That's that, we're having, we're finishing one conversation before we start the other one.
So, um. That's it. So we, we, all department heads come to us and we tell them how much we're planning to pay them. Um, for the coming year, department heads have that discretion to pay. Decide what their, their employees are paying. So I think that discretion is there and not everybody necessarily gets the same amount, and there have been many years where. People, the town report said three percent, but that person did not get that number, it could have been more, it could have been less. So, but for budgeting purposes and raising the appropriate amount of money to pay people for the year, I think we need to put some figure. Okay. So is there any, besides Scott's concerns about it, about four percent for administrative?
Yeah, I think, you know, I mean, so I'm in the administrative category, but I don't have a C D L. But there are certain expertise and skills that I have that seem to be now sort of diminished. Because, you know, other jobs, you you're putting other jobs that you're valuing more, like you're putting them in a different category, I think. You know, I am in demand as as a worker and I can make a lot more money. And I've turned those down because I like being here, I like the flexibility, I like working for the town, I think. You know, I'm happy with what I'm getting, but there is also, you know, it's not just highway and police that are being coached, so.
I understand completely.
So.
Yeah, hey Sarah, first than Eric. Um, I would just, and I hear what you're saying, but I think it's more than strictly the C D L license or the police academy training, it's also the conditions under which they work. And one of the things Randy said, we want to see, his department is the only one that has to put on bulletproof vest to go to work. That is a different service.
A no, a thing that you take on.
Excuse me, let me finish. But that is a reality of their job, there's also the reality of of these departments' jobs, that their hours are not set in stone. They are not, you know. I I don't anticipate a circumstance where administrative people would be called in to work at midnight. On a Friday night, and those are the, those, in my mind, those are part of the consideration when I'm thinking that these departments. Would be treated differently.
That's actually you are treating, and I agree that police sir, it's a whole different category, it's just completely different, I wouldn't wanna be a police officer, but. You are now making distinctions among police, whereas before you weren't.
Right.
Okay.
I wouldn't wanna get up at three o'clock in the morning and plow the road.
That's, well, that that all helps my calculus now, so.
No, but you know, Travis, who also plows roads, um. Works his hours and then has to get up in the middle of the night and, and get up early at three or four in the morning and drive the roads to find out what needs to be done, so. Uh, I don't, I can, in my job, I can, I can still sleep till six o'clock in the morning, you know, he doesn't have that luxury. So, and that's not year round, and these guys never know when they're gonna need to be called out. In the middle of the night to cover something, an emergency, or go wherever they're gonna go, or transport somebody who's kicking in a. Police car or, you know, you just don't know. So, Eric, you had to hand us, huh? So, and I get it, everybody's valuable and.
And it's just.
It's, I I, we're trying to do the right thing and. Uh, you know, there's certain people who just will never ask for what they really want, and there's other people who will ask for what they want and more and and. So we're just trying to find a an equitable way to to. Even things out, and Randy's made a compelling case that local, other police departments are. Very competitive, in fact, more competitive in some ways than we are with wages now, that's a problem, every time they jump. It costs us a fortune to get somebody through the academy, get them outfitted, get the, everything all set for them. Again, trying to get somebody at the last minute to join our highway through and get them trained and get them. It's a lot, and it's not diminishing everything.
I get it, it's just, you know, it's a difficult conversation to have.
It is.
I want, you know, you know, and I I would never ever wanna, you know, I think they should, obviously, I think everybody's underpaid for highway and cops. Personally, seeing what they do, but I just don't want others in administration to feel like administration is like a lesser than kind of job.
And we really have some administrative to people say, I'm fine with this, I'm fine with you dividing things out.
I'm I'm good, like I said, I'm always happy with what is offered because there are circumstances for me where my job. It works for me and I don't wanna rock the boat, so I'm good, I just don't wanna. I just hope in your minds that we're all, you know, we each contribute something really important, you know.
Absolutely, and this is really hard, I I, you know, I I I fought for years to keep everybody equal. Um, but I see what's happening with the uh, competitive nature of some. Police officers, people with a C D L, you can, if you have a C D L now, you can write your ticket to.
You can move anywhere in the country.
That's right. That's right, so, and it doesn't mean that your accounting skills and your financial skills aren't equally portable too.
They're portable and.
You know, everybody is, look at, we just lost an employee.
Yes, but I like, I don't like, I don't wanna rock, for me, I'm good with, you know, whether it's four percent or five percent, really doesn't make a difference, I put in five because. Cost of living is more like eight, but greedy. And I thought three was too low, so I went five, so four, okay, so.
And the cost of living is crazy and there will be people who cannot put their taxes this year, this, this is gonna be a big increase. You know, and we aren't affected by that C L A on the town side of things, but our school budget certainly is. And it's gonna come back and and kick us big time, even if the yield goes up, which it is, and it's. Used one time money that's left over, it's still gonna be a big tax increase. So. Now, the highway and the police department. I think that I'm, I'm happy to start start with highway, I think Travis's request of. Two and a half dollars and a dollar is a reasonable request, he will obviously customize. Obviously customize that exactly for what he needs, but it is a variable rate and his whole payroll is up eight percent. Saying that. I'm I'm okay with that. I think Randy's is a little different because of the the transitions happening too and that kind of adds more layers into it, it just does. It does because. Um, as. We we see there's a lot of training for. A new admin and there's now, you know, we'll be looking for a a new chief and there's a lot of things going on and and there's got to be some overlap. So the police payroll now is up how much Marco? Now that we're done.
So staying with what? What we discussed? So it's ten percent.
Well. It's ten percent, except if you take. The total of regular salaries, holiday, overtime and on call differential and. Aggregate those. And compare the twenty twenty two, the twenty two, twenty three to the twenty three, twenty four, the actual increase is seven and a half percent. That's really the total amount of wages. It's not just the hourly.
What do people think about that? Right in line with the highway department?
I'm fine with that. Travis sounds so defeated.
It's not about defeated, it's just about, oh, you know, we we make the decision, you know, now. And townspeople think it should be something else and can change.
Absolutely.
So.
And they.
We understand the duty of the best for our town, what we. As the five of us are trying to do, but it's not easy. So don't think we're trying to not pay our employees, you know, so. You know, at the end of the day, how much are the taxes going to be now?
I'm personally good with four percent, I'm happy.
So, yeah, and and it's and people can say, I mean, they can't say, I want you to cut. Cut the police. Wages down to four percent, they can't say that, they can't say that, you don't have to do that. They can't say we want to take twenty thousand dollars out of something, whatever it is, when maybe it's out of fuel, who knows, but. They can say that and we have to cut the budget by twenty thousand, that's what they approve. Um, but.
What is the, so what is, we're all sudden, how much to budget up from last year?
Well, he's got to plug in four to it, you know, into a bunch of different slots now, the police department had four for the admin.
Lucky my skill set is still.
That would include. Admin staff and then also the, um.
So everything.
Transfer station.
The entire budget is up eight percent. Cause I have everybody. Administration. Did everybody at four?
Even transfer station and then.
Transfer station was.
We've put it at three now, it's going back.
Three now it's four.
I mean, here's it. On here, it has the high, the maintenance wages, salary wages. As an eight percent increase. But if you take in the, if you adjust the overtime, the way you've adjusted it. You're actually only looking at a one percent increase. Over over last year's budget.
For highway?
Yeah. Even though they're, even though they're asking for more hourly, they're not getting, they've taken away from their overtime. Now, overtime's not controllable. Really, but. Well, you've said you've had a historical, you've had history to look at and and think that it was over.
But this is real money as if somebody's. Their paycheck weekly is going to reflect. Whatever their their increase that Travis decides they're going to give them, out of this pool of money that we're going to raise.
Remember, there has. Not been a year I've been sitting on this board that we don't usually have a surplus. Right, so. We see the budget pretty good, surplus from different departments, one year of this department, that.
Sure, sure, that's good.
I don't think it's going to be the case this year because of fuel and other things, so we don't even know. What the end of this year could be, we could be the opposite in deficit, not buying or. Putting money away, we're just. Taking. And setting higher. Than the eight percent, we could be at ten or twelve percent.
All right, I have to choose myself from bad news best.
Safe travels. I love you.
Thank you, Dan.
I'm not sure if I'm wearing enough. But I just took. The police budget from last year and calculated a four percent increase. You took your salaries from last year and calculated a four percent increase. And. It was. Thirty seven thousand dollars. So.
Well, Marco keeps, anyone have any questions, well Marco keeps fiddling with those numbers, we can talk about. Capital budgets and then we can move on, because I know everybody would like to not be here till.
I'll just add, thank you for this conversation and it is a hard topic to cover and I appreciate your.
But we we had to talk about it and and this, we had been in a listening mode, but now we can't be listening anymore, we have to. Have to listen and make decisions and. We haven't voted on this budget yet, but we are getting closer.
Just because we're not going to come out in that number, the difference in our budget, five percent to four percent, well, this lowers our budget a thousand and forty two dollars.
Thank you for giving us that. Uh, okay, so let's talk about the um highway budget, I mean, the um capital budget. And when you feel good, let us.
What would you, I mean, what what is it that you?
I want to, could you pronounce a few of them, sure, so that we can have them. Obviously, we're all going to go back and look at it very carefully, because we're going to. We are going to vote on this. Next meeting.
Is it right if I send them tomorrow morning?
Yes.
Because I just want to make sure.
We're not going to vote today, we're just, we just want to get it.
And like you said, I I didn't mean disrespect earlier, I. It's a hard conversation, you know. It's, um. You know, I'm left alone, I can do what I need to do when I need to do it, and that to me is a big. Big part, start coming in more. Maybe I should come in three days.
If you got the C D L, then.
I like, I'm kind of speaking on behalf of like, to administrative employees in general, like. You know, the world has changed, got more complex, our, my job's got more complex, I could probably use another person. Deciding not to budget that, because. Things could could go back the other way, but.
Well, when the country hits a recession, things are probably good.
I I that's why I'm holding on.
If I had a football right now. The way we're heading. Not looking pretty, but.
That's why I'm, you know what?
That's why I'm just.
Four percent, five percent.
When that happens, Marco. Your money will increase because of one reason.
And even if you, you know, a percent. Honestly, like.
I know.
It's a really good, you know, I mean, yeah, percentage wise, it's big and for some people at the lower end of the world spectrum, it's definitely big, but. Right, so I mean.
Okay, thank you. All right, so let's talk about the, why not, the capital equipment fund. You guys, perhaps Randy, you have the the most recent one on your in hand? I just want to make sure all the equipment is where you think you want it. It should be.
Yeah, already updated everything this year.
I don't know if. Raising five hundred thousand dollars in the capital equipment fund this year is going to be enough. We're going to go. Negative. That's assuming everything is purchased during this this year, but there's a good chance it will be, um. We are really ramping up our. Fire department equipment, which is what is also really, really expensive. Well, and it's it it's something that we haven't done a lot of in recent years, so. Yeah.
And that's what I was afraid of, so we could.
Yeah, uh, Randy.
Yeah, so. Again, I'm just going to throw that fifty thousand dollars, but in twenty four, twenty five, we see that I really can do two fingers. And last time we discussed this, I said there's a very high probability that one of those would get moved over to twenty five, twenty six. I just asked Michael, he thought, I know that's a very high probability, so if you think moving, and it doesn't matter if you put like. E Q two over there. But we don't do E Q two, we do E Q, we swap it, if you think you want to. Based on trying to do something this year, I really believe that we can move one of those two to twenty four, twenty five or twenty five, twenty six, if that makes. Really, but that's a, that's a total of two months.
Um, it it makes a difference, every bit makes a difference. Um, the big elephants are the four hundred thousand dollar Mac. Fire and and the um, the Peterbilt. So that's nine hundred thousand dollars.
I think you need to raise it to six hundred thousand. Start going up to six hundred thousand.
Yeah, and I I think.
No, there's no way around, we're just. Going to keep circling around to be.
Yep, back to the. I think that it'd be nice just to have one a year if we can get on that schedule, so should we move the twenty seventeen out? Or the sedan? EQ through two, three or four, or. Two or three, two or three.
Do you know where the ladders are?
The sedan is old.
Oh, yeah, probably Mike. He subtracts the ladders and stuff and whatnot, so he's thinking of sixty over.
The sixteen over.
The one that's seven years old, not the one that's five years old.
Seventeen and over to the next year.
Seventeen.
Okay.
Yeah.
No.
Get a nice two.
Okay. Yeah.
And we just end up having bigger. Benefits, hang on, what are we doing now?
Okay, we'll we'll catch, this is not, we'll we'll catch up, you keep.
I'm good on the other side, yeah.
So we move the. Uh, police interceptor twenty seventeen to EQ two over to twenty five, twenty six.
I think fifty thousand?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we just had a little side discussion here about. Upping the the capital equipment fund to six hundred.
All the way across.
Because we have got to, we're going, that twenty four, twenty five. Five hundred to twenty five thousand, you know.
We need to change it all, it's six hundred thousand, start.
All the way across. And this is really.
It's going to increase.
This is easy to explain because of all of this fire equipment that we have. Really pushed and pushed and pushed. Off year after year after year. We haven't, I we haven't bought much new fire equipment since I've been on the board.
We're still going to go negative now.
Yeah.
Twenty four, twenty five.
Yeah, but it won't be quite as bad.
No, it won't.
And we'll see, you know, these. Trucks always seem to move out and that's the thing is if we could. Decouple the four hundred thousand dollar Mac versus from the Peterbilt by another year, that would make a big difference.
Well.
But the uh, ladder truck is still out there and the price on that just keeps going up. But that will make it look. Better, we won't be negative this year. We shouldn't be negative the following year.
We'll be negative twenty four, twenty five by a hundred and seventy three thousand. Okay, and then after that, we're. Our balance board stays in positive.
I mean, negative in twenty three, twenty four.
You have a six hundred this year and six hundred next year?
Six hundred this year is we.
Oh, that's the year we're in, so six hundred.
Six hundred and twenty three, twenty four. Puts that negative fifty nine, six fifty four.
Yep.
Six.
Next year. And maybe a year after. And then go back to six hundred, six fifty for the next two years.
A little over a million. They do, we are putting in higher interest rate, yeah. Freddie back C D.
Now's our negativity now, can we move those two to six fifty?
Us, you're basically flat in twenty three, twenty four, you're down ten thousand.
Okay.
And then it's down one seventy four.
One eighty.
In.
In twenty four, twenty five.
And then we'll posit.
Right, correct.
Until we get to the uh. No, ladder truck, oh, yeah.
No, we're still sixty seven above.
Yeah, okay.
As long as we we go to six fifty for two years and then six hundred for the rest. Now we just have two million years.
Okay. We're close and now. Capital paving. That.
Seems to be the big one, everyone wants paving.
Everybody does.
Actually, this time here.
So, what do you think Travis, is that good at the five hundred thousand?
It's at six, right?
Was that six?
It's, I think it's six. I think you've been doing six, right?
Yeah.
I would leave it there.
All right, good, let's go.
And the capital building fund, if we have that. We're good with capital paving.
Yeah.
Being at six, okay.
I would just keep going that. Just.
And. Capital building. That seems like a reasonable number. Eighty thousand a year. So we should be getting close to flushing out some of those warnings uh, for the, for some of those articles for the town. Report. We're gonna, we raised the capital equipment to six fifty this coming year. And then six hundred for paving, eighty for capital building.
You want to do six fifty for?
This year or next year?
No, it's just a state, it's not like prices are going to go down, but. All right, so if you give us, once you go through those numbers, we'll get sent to us and then we'll.
Yeah, I mean, I have.
Hopefully approve it.
I have, uh, before we meet, I have, I wanted. You guys to, under other business, and I, we have time for the next meeting, but the tax sale is on the nineteenth. And I just wanted to, if. You felt comfortable authorizing it today. Or we can wait till the seventeen.
We have Linda. The town agent.
Linda is the town agent.
Yeah.
We didn't put her on the agenda today, we missed it, but there still is the the seventeen.
Uh, she's aware of it, right?
She is.
So I think that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd rather, so that everybody's aware of the town, that the tax sale's on the nineteenth.
Thank you.
You guys, anything else? Travis, Randy, Mike. All right. Jim, you have any questions, you're still there? Okay.
That's it.
Well, then I think that I'm going to adjourn this meeting at three fifty three P M. Thank you all, thank you.
You, uh, all for. The for making those hard decisions.
That's why we make the big bucks.